The next item on the agenda that we have is a Charter Review Committee recommendations. Mr. Mike Dunn. Good evening. How are you?
I'm all right. How are you? How's everybody doing? It's been a long night.
Doing well.
So, I'm Mike Dunn. I'm the Chair of the Charter Review Committee. I represent 14 other people in my role tonight, all of whom were appointed by you as citizen volunteers. So, Mr. President, I'll follow your lead, if you will.
Yes, I believe where we left off, there was one issue left. Mr. Hurley helped me with where we were. I believe it was in Article 3, reference to the executive.
Actually, it's on the list submitted to the Charter Review Committee of the proposed amendments. That's in your brief book. It's item number nine, Charter, Section 315, Confirmation of Appointments. And the question is, should the confirmations be done before a person is hired? That was the last one in that section.
Yeah, I believe we had said the question that we had turned in was that a prior county executive had hired employees pending council confirmation. It created a bit of a controversy between the two branches. And we were wondering whether or not the recommendation should be to require council confirmation before an employee is formally hired. Now, that is the question, but, Mr. Wilber, that is already part of the process, is it not? So, there's nothing really for us to adjust there, as I see it. Am I interpreting that correctly, Ms. Hurley?
I would agree.
Okay.
I think the, can I, Mr. President?
Yes.
I think the confusion there is, you know, under the former executive, we did have someone who was hired before they were confirmed.
True. And I do understand that, but I think how the council was protesting to that series of events that took place, Mr. Wilber knows that it was surely a violation of proper procedure and maybe the charter. And I know in one case, the council actually did not hire that individual, when it turned out to be somewhat of an embarrassment. Because when the formal presentation was made to the council, you had someone who had said they thought they were hired and did not realize until after the fact that it wasn't so. It wasn't a pleasant set of circumstances. But again, I don't think that's our issue today, because that was already addressed.
It wasn't the council's fault then, either.
No, no. But if we could, then, we'll move on to Article 4. The first item was on 405. It was to make the age of the county executive 30. It's currently 25. There's a lot of people out there, what's wrong with a 25-year-old, Michael?
Nothing wrong with a 25-year-old, Josh.
So, it's council, what is the council's take on this, 25, 30? We want to try to make sure we make some hard, fast decisions here. You've had plenty of time to review it.
I think the 25 is fine.
Right.
Keep it as.
Of course, Josh said keep it as.
Young guy keeps it the same.
Any other council input here? Everybody okay with 25?
I'm fine with that.
All right. I think we're okay with 25, Mr. Hurley. The second part in 405, to add the language "at the time of the election", I think that's fairly innocuous.
It's now moot if you're going to stick to 25, if you will. But where the Charter Review Committee was relative to the age of 30, was you needed to be 30 by the time of the election. You could file, if you will, as a 29-year-old. And I guess in this case, it means you could file as a 24-year-old, if 25 is the minimum age. That's where we were.
Well, Mr. Hastings has aspirations.
He's got three weeks to file, if he has such aspirations.
407(c) was to add that all members must be present for the vote. And looking at the actual charter itself, any input from council on this?
You know, I think times have changed since, you know, that was initially, that language was crafted. Of course, in today's world, you know, it's a lot easier to be remote and still participate. But at the same time, you know, I think there's, I know a lot of government bodies have had to deal with that issue, because you don't want to encourage people not to attend and not to be here at the table, because they could sit home and zoom in. So, you wouldn't want to encourage that. But, you know, I don't know if that language needs to, it starts getting a little ridiculous. You know, I don't want to say, like, you know, you need a reason, you know, you can't be here or something.
I will only state where the committee was in this thinking, fully acknowledging, Mr. McCain, that Zoom, and we have one of your council members on Zoom tonight, this was specifically because of the seriousness of replacing that vacancy. That's all. So, we thought that if a vacancy was going to occur, that it was incumbent upon the members of the council to be present to make that decision. That's all that was about.
So, the council is aware it simply states, "If a vacancy occurs after the first 12 months of a term, the vacancy shall be permanently filled by resolution by a majority vote of the members of the county council within 45 days after vacancy occurs." And you're suggesting that we include that they all must be present to vote?
Correct. That's correct. That's where we were thinking.
Okay.
So, that's in-person versus Zoom meetings?
Are we talking about two different things?
Yeah, I'm kind of, you know, I was talking about it in more of a broader sense, but I get.
We're talking about 407(c).
You're talking about (c).
When the vacancy needs to be filled, it was our thought that all members of the council should be present.
In the room?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Dunn.
Should that be clarified?
In today's Zoom world, potentially, yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And our apologies for, yep.
I guess, Josh?
I would say I don't have any problem with, I mean, I think if it is an important vote, people are going to be in person. But that being said, you know, I want to, a separate issue is, you know, having somebody be able to Zoom in, which I think that probably should be. We just probably need to put parameters around that.
My concern is you have a 45-day window, and we know that's narrow, especially based on the times the council meets in a period of a month. You have someone that's in an automobile accident in the hospital, they can't be present. You have a problem. So, that would be my concern in requiring everyone to be present. A quorum, I think, is always sufficient in any regular meeting, so.
Or five.
Or five.
From earlier.
So, we need a decision.
President, if you're going to count Zoom, that has to count in the quorum, too. Either here or they're not.
And I think Zoom would count as present.
No, I understand. I just, I was just pointing out, you couldn't just say you had to have four here, and you could have someone Zoom. If they're on Zoom, they're here or they're not, depending on if you count Zoom or not.
If they're on Zoom, it's a quorum, I'm assuming.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Holloway?
If we go with that, is that going to affect a lot of the other things we vote on? I mean, is, I know this is a charter change, but, you know, somebody can say, well, you know, for this, you got to have everybody in the room. For this vote, you don't have to have as many.
Right.
So, I always think a quorum is sufficient. I mean, that's why we set a quorum, right?
I guess.
But that is specific to this article.
Well, I understand that, but.
Again, we have 45 days to operate. I wouldn't want to have to keep putting things off and miss the 45-day deadline, because we had one of seven members that absolutely couldn't be here.
We've had situations where we've operated with six members for a couple of months.
That's true. That is really true.
Somebody passed away, so.
That's true. All right. So, consensus? We're going to put it in, or we're going to leave it as is?
Leave it as is.
Leave it as is?
But that being said, on the separate, if it's okay for the separate issue, this is all vacancy of county, office of county executive, if I'm reading the strike.
That's correct.
On the separate issue of being present, and I don't know where that is.
That'll be for another time.
Okay, good. I'll make sure. That could be for a medical reason or something, you know?
I appreciate that. 412, Michael?
Yeah, that had to do with, when hiring, say, a Director of Administration, we are recommending, it currently says that, and I've got it right here, so bear with me, prior to assuming the duties of the office, the Director of Administration shall be a resident of the county and shall continue to ride. What we're saying is, prior to assuming the duties of the office, if you were to hire a Director of Administration who lives in Frederick, and he or she is hired, it currently says that he or she must be a resident of Wycomico County prior to taking the job. We are saying, give that person the opportunity to say yes to the job, and then commit to moving here within six months. Again, this is kind of a, not a big deal, but at the same time, if you lose a candidate because that person is, you know, somewhere outside of Wycomico County and does not yet reside, that might make a difference in you getting the good candidate that you want. That's where the committee was on this.
Yeah, I've always thought it was a good idea to encourage department heads to live in the jurisdiction.
And I do think that the six months does make sense. Makes complete sense. Okay, so we're okay with this, right? We're okay with that?
I'll be fine.
All right. Moving on, the next one, Michael, 413.
Sure. So, this was discussed or brought up a little bit earlier tonight. This has to do with the requirement that the appointed, selected administrative department heads of the county executive must get reconfirmed by the council after each election. The committee's thinking was, as we know, there's been a whole bunch of turnover in Wycomico County at our department level. So, we were recommending that the county executive, whomever he or she is, when they appoint whomever they want as the department head, that when that next election occurs, if that person is still in their position, that they do not need to reappear before the council for confirmation again. They've already been confirmed by the county executive. And our thought was, if there's a good department head, that he or she should be allowed to stay in office if chosen by that county executive. If a new county executive is hired, he or she can, of course, determine whether to keep that person on board. But we just felt that with the high rate of vacancies and some of the exodus of the department heads within the county, that this would just take one step to perhaps allow that department head to know that he or she has more than four years of job security, not dependent upon every single election. So, that's where we were with that.
Any comments?
I think that's important. I think it's a good addition, personally, because you just want to, obviously, we could fire, I mean, obviously, the county executive could fire the person in that role if they don't like want them, but we want to be able to give to the department heads the security of knowing that they'll have a job, and politics won't be at play.
So, you're saying that if someone is a department head, and a new county executive comes on, he can't get rid of them?
No, he could get rid of them.
So, you're not really, you're not giving them job security? Because they're still work at the pleasure of the county executive, so your job is only secure for four years or until the next election, unless the same county executive elected again? Because if a new county executive elected, all those department heads are at risk of losing their jobs.
Don't take this the wrong way by any, this is us recommending that the council, not you people sitting here, but the council as a body, be removed. Right now, that department head has to get reappointed, potentially, within six months of the election, by the council as well. We're recommending to get rid of that.
If a county executive is reelected to office, what their suggestion is that the process of the county executive bringing forward all the department heads to the county council for approval, again, should be eliminated.
That including if a new county executive come on, and he wants to keep some of them, they don't have to come back in front of the council?
That's correct.
Right.
That's what we're suggesting.
But if he relieves somebody, brings in a new.
Mr. Holloway?
If he relieves somebody, and we have to bring in a new person, we approve that one.
Right. We go through the process.
Right, yeah.
We go through the process.
It was pretty, I think, earth-shattering for some of the folks over the past few years. That's one of the problems with the county executive form of government. You know, every four years, or you possibly could have a new county executive that wants to clean house. And that kind of makes it, you know, hard to keep help. That's a good way to put it.
Isn't that the way it is with every form of executive, whether it's a mayor, governor, president?
Exactly, yeah. But there's sort of a checks and balances system that's in the current law. The way it's written now is that, you know, if you have an executive, then the executive is reelected. And the council may recognize the fact that there are certain department heads that aren't doing their job, despite the fact the executive is completely enthralled with that individual's performance. Then it would give the council that opportunity to say, wait a minute, let's put a stop on this right now. We're not so sure. We want to keep going in that direction.
And that's what I like about this, is if somebody is doing a bad job, we'd have the opportunity every four years to vote on them, or the consequent councils would be able to vote on.
Again, for better or worse, what we're doing here is, and as you will see in the next one, this is actually, we as the Charter Review Committee think that the separation between the county executive and the county council, in a lot of cases, is important. And we think this just sort of puts a bit of a firewall, my word, that the county executive, whomever he or she is, has the opportunity to hire and retain the people that he or she has hired. And again, it kind of removes the council, other than the initial appointment, which, of course, Mr. Holloway just alluded to. Mr. Joe Smith is recommended for appointment to be the Director of Department X. Mr. Joe Smith has to appear before this council. This council has to approve that confirmation. But after that, Mr. Joe Smith, if you will, works for, and at the whim, if you will, of the county executive, even after that next election. It just kind of removes the county council. After you've confirmed the person the first time, that person is good to go until the county executive chooses to replace him, or is where we're thinking.
And I've been an advocate of the way it is here, but I do recognize the fact that, you know, there has to be some, I think, security in place for the people who are coming in not to know that their job could be on the line every four years.
Every four years. That's right. And it's not perfect, and we fully acknowledge that.
Are we okay with the recommendation?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, we're good. Last, the next one is Section 4, 414, is to add the letter D to state that the county executive must notify the county council in writing within 10 working days of a vacancy of a department head. It's pretty simple.
It came, again, this is now one that, if you looked at how things are, we weren't looking at it this way, but this is one that strengthens the council. It came to our attention that during the last administration, there were some vacancies that you all were not even made aware of, until sometimes you were made aware of them here blindly at a meeting. So, we are suggesting that if and when someone leaves the senior position, that the county executive needs to notify the county council in writing that, again, we're going to use the hypothetical, Joe Smith has left his position as head of Department X.
Everybody okay with that?
Just a quick question. I don't know if Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Hurley would know this better, but does this hap, can we do this through another means? Can we do this through, I don't know, is there, do we have to go through the charter change, or is something that we could pass on our own as a regulation?
Does it have to be an amendment? Mike?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
The problem with it is, I have a question.
Oh, I thought you were answering that.
No, we're asking you.
I don't know that you've got the, I'm trying to think, if you have the power to tell the executive by ordinance that he must report to you, I don't think so.
We're the Charter Review Committee. We can ask anything.
No, not you.
I yield to.
Not you. I'm talking about the council.
Okay.
I don't know that, once you set that up with the distinct departments, that you can then require them to tell you that.
And I believe you've already vetted that, correct, Mr. Wilber?
Right.
Okay. All right. That's your question. So, we're all okay with adding the letter D? Okay, thank you.
The problem with all that is, the county executive might not have 10 days to notify us. The guy just might not show up.
Fair enough.
I'll forewarn you, I have about four or five other things for Section 4, but I'm not doing it tonight. So, we're going to Section 5.
That's right. Absolutely. And by the way, I apologize to the hypothetical Joe Smith, who may be watching this evening. So, 502.
I know Joe Smith.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's a fairly common name. I apologize. 502(c), this is just us kind of tightening up and saying that, where it currently says, suspension or removal may be ordered because of race, national origin, religious opinion, or religious affiliation of said officer. We're simply saying same thing, but we're kind of doing the protected classes under federal and state law, is all we're recommending there. Instead of that big line of all the various distinctions, we're just recommending to follow the distinctions laid out in state and federal.
Okay. Everybody good with this?
That's good, too, because if something changes, you know, technically, you'd have to go back and change the charter.
Yeah, don't want to do.
Where this way, if something changes, it's already incorporated in federal and state law, so.
503, Michael, to add number 11.
Very simple, just to add, literally to state that the Salisbury-Wycomico Ocean City Regional Airport is a Department of the County. It's not currently listed that way.
I think that's well overdue.
Well overdue. That should have been changed when we changed the committee, the form of.
Yeah, no kidding. It was the best thing we did, I think, do that. Okay, 504, to remove the word substantial?
Yep, that's all. Instead of saying, "The county executive deems substantial reorganization", we're saying when he or she reorganizes, whether it be substantial or not, that's where that came from.
And that small word could make a big difference in the battle that can develop between a reorganization and not. My concern is just whether or not this small, one-word change is going to be enough to add one more amendment to the ballot.
Understood.
So, that's the only reason I would say, let's leave it alone. I do appreciate it, because, believe me, it made a big difference when we reorganized the Law Department, but couldn't really say it was a reorganization. So, that's, I think, what this intent is. But again, with the council, to put a word substantial into the charter, do we want to do that with knowing what we're facing on the ballot?
No.
No?
Even though we can kind of put that on hold until we, because, you know, if we start ending up with 30 amendments, you know, are we going to want to add something as simple?
This will be put on our hold list, which Mrs. Hurley hates, because she says you're going to run into it.
She's good at that, though. She's very good.
We'll be back here again.
Michael, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah. These next two are literal housekeeping orders. The last sentence in 505(a), bear with me. In the Department of Finance, which is 505, and the Department of Public Works, which is 506, the last sentence, in this case, the Director of Finance, shall be appointed and removed, and his salary fixed in accordance with Section 502(b). We're just recommending to get rid of this. It's redundant. Not all of the other department heads are listed this way. So, we just saw that as being redundant. And so, we recommended it both for 505, Department of Finance, and 506, the Department of Public Works, just last sentence in that 505 and 506(a).
Everybody okay with that? I agree. You know, it is a redundancy, Michael. Thank you.
Sure, certainly.
507(a), this is the tough one.
This is an interesting one, and we acknowledge that, and please understand that we acknowledge that.
Okay.
In 507(a), in the second paragraph, it currently says, "The county attorney shall serve at the pleasure of the executive and the council", and then the next line, "The county attorney may be removed by office by either", meaning the executive with the consent of a majority of the council, or a two-thirds vote of the entire council. We are recommending that this section read as the following. "The county attorney shall serve at the pleasure of the executive", period. And then we get rid of everything else in 507.
Joe, I know you're all right with this, because you've always said there should be two attorneys, anyway.
Mr. Holloway?
Yeah. Saying that he's changed his opinion on that.
No, Joe's always said that. He's sitting over there. But no, I tend to agree with it as well, because I don't care what you say.
We didn't need one, but then you're okay with it.
Prior attorneys, and I know even, I mean, knowing you guys, you've got a private work session going on. But I know that prior attorneys, and I know Mr. Wilber has been caught between many rock and hard places because of the way it's positioned now, so I think it's a good recommendation.
Yeah.
We okay? All right. Michael, thank you very much. Appreciate, sorry to hold you here so late.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much for your patience.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilber. Are you here for this next one or not?
I'm here the rest of the night.
You said that in a very negative sense.
You don't have to move.
The next item on the agenda, fine, we're the, next item on the agenda is the, sorry.
Mr. President?
Yes, can we pass on this?
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe you want to table that one until, because we do have guests waiting for number four on the agenda?
Appreciate that. So, we're going to do a disposition of surplus property and move on to number four, the letter of support regarding Senate Bill 854, House Bill 1126, use of gray water systems on the, on former dredge sites or in remote areas with minimal public access. Thank you. We have Chris Adams, who's agreed to be here with us, and John Norr is also.
Mr.?
Yes, and, yes, and again, apologies.
Mr. Council President?
Yes, Senator, how are you? Good evening.
Thank you very much. I didn't, I didn't know whether I was going to be presenting. We presented this bill last week, and I thought maybe you might want me to give you a little update and why we're here tonight with that.
I appreciate that. I was getting there. I wanted to make sure that we recognized all those in attendance. From what I can see on the board, we have Senator Eckert, we have Delegate Anderton, and we have Delegate Hartman. Are there any other there that I can't see?
If I can, Delegate Maltz was booted off and can't figure out how to get in. Of course, Delegate Sample Hughes and Senator Carosa had other things this evening. He couldn't be here, so we're picking up the slack for him.
All right. Thank you very much. Senator, we'll let you go first here.
Thank you very much, and I just want to first say, thank you for the wonderful opportunity to be here with you all tonight. You restored my faith in the processes. Very well-done meeting, and thank you. My internet is also unstable from Annapolis, but I just wanted to share with you, we introduced this bill, as you know, many of you know, we've been trying to resolve this issue. And the pandemic has created a situation where we really needed a solution to be able to preserve a business down on the West Side. So, we have been working with a number of the different departments through the years, and through this past year, and finally concluded that there'd be an opportunity to introduce legislation. We crafted something, we worked it out with the property owner, and then we went back and upgraded that to what it is now. So, when we went to the Education, Health, and Environmental Affairs Committee this week and presented Senate Bill 854, the gray water systems, public and private buildings. Currently, as you know, there's no law in place that allows for the disposal of gray water systems safely and properly for small seasonal businesses. Businesses located on a unique site, a dredge site, are also prohibited from using gray water systems on their property, resulting in a number of issues without establishing that can establish a clean and successful business. This bill would authorize the use of gray water system for handwashing with the three-component sinks by a public or private building that is located in a former dredge site, or is located in a remote area with minimal public access and operates on a seasonal basis. We tried to craft a piece of legislation that was extremely narrow that we could put forth before the committee. The tanks would be required to be disposed of in accordance with regulations and guidelines established by the Maryland Department of Health. We added amendments to define the three-compartment bar sanitation sinks that were to be used in the system as well. Proper regulations are essential in order to preserve our natural waterfronts, especially the Chesapeake Bay, from any further pollution or wastewater. However, this needs to be done in a way that does not. that does not harm our small businesses as well. So as we introduced the bill and edits it was discussed, and Mr. John Sheckels did a great job testifying with me last week, after much discussion and very much concern for the preservation of our small businesses, particularly during the pandemic, which has aggravated this unique opportunity, the committee asked if we would go back to the county and ask if this could be a county-specific bill. So thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight and to ask you for your consideration of this piece of legislation. And then if you would, it will could move forward being a local bill.
Thank you, Senator, very much.
Thank you.
Delegate Adams, did you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Council President and Council. So, you know, Senator Eckhart and and I've been working this certainly for the past year. I know that there's been two meetings, one with the property owner and one that we had with legislators with Department of Health and Department of Environment. And I always sensed that there was a willingness to find a way forward. However, the regulatory environment, as it's drafted, doesn't provide for that. So Senator Eckhart in describing the bill and its purpose and legislative intent, I think, speaks generally to the narrow nature of the fact that the the property has been improved. I mean, the building's there, it was permitted, and that we want this business to remain. You know, property owner John, who's sitting next to me, speaks very straightforwardly about the Red Roost, certainly during the pandemic, Boonies and the other restaurants he owns, and how difficult it's been to be in business, and that the Bull Lips location is an attraction and is the difference maker for his business. And I believe him. I've gone to Bull Lips and hung out as a constituent and friend and then gone to the restaurant and had dinner. And I can tell you that the reality in being in restaurant business right now is nearly impossible, watching how, you know, customers have such demand to show up at a restaurant, and the restaurants are very limited. So what Bull Lips means to John, and these are my words, he has his own way of putting it, is that when somebody comes to his restaurant for all you can eat crabs and has to wait an hour, hour and a half, he's giving them a chance to go out to the waterfront. Frankly, it looks just like some areas that I like to go in Florida, beautiful location. He's doing it currently in a way that is very environmentally responsible, the way he's disposing of gray water, the way that he's taking care of the the business because it's seasonal, in a way that I think reflects positively on the fact that this is right on the Wakamiko River. And I think that the legislature and Senator Eckhart and I would agree is that these aren't normal times. And with the facts as they're presented to us, the fact that we're not asking for something to be built, that it's already there, and that the legislature seems to be willing to listen. And I think, Senator, your hearing went well, from what I understand.
Yes.
That, you know, I'll use Addy's words, you know, politics is the the exploration of what is possible. And I think the legislature is hearing two bills that's saying respectfully that we're trying to help this business owner where and how we can. And that's, that's my two cents on this. You know, West Wakamiko is, you know, Roaring Point, it's the Westside Fire Department, it's Cedar Hill. To me, I live, that's my district. That's why I wanted to bring this bill. It's White Haven, but it's also Boonies, and it's also the Red Roost, which is a historic business. It's been around for as long as I can remember. And so I think this is a good bill. It's here for the right reasons. And thank you, Addy, for being part of the bill and describing it.
Yeah, we were at the Westside Forum about a couple of weeks ago, and the first thing they said was, what are you all going to do for economic development down here?
Yeah.
I'm like, well, you got somebody standing in the back that's already doing that, and this is a part of that whole process of what we can do to to enhance their their lifestyle there. Ernie, you were there now. Josh, any comments?
Yeah, I'd just add to it, I think. First of all, I'm glad that it's a local bill. I think, I think that would have been, that could have killed it if the fact that the rest of the state, if we were opening up options elsewhere. We certainly want to make this happen. So how do you do it in the right way if it's not able to do that anywhere else in the state? I think with our letter, we might want to include, of course, we need to change it to be specific to Wakamiko County, to spell that out in the first sentence. The only other thing I bring up is, we probably also, I think we need to be clear on non-toxic chemicals for hand wash. Essentially, if I'm getting that right, that's what we're using. To this day, you can still buy, many hand washes in general right now, to this day, are still using toxic chemicals. You're, we're probably get a little bit of pushback
Well, yeah, we're really sensitive to that. Obviously, you all know my background. I'm the Senior Vice President of Phillips Foods. We're a global food manufacturer, and we're actually very sensitive on hand washing and everything else. So everything we use down there is biodegradable. To give you some background, obviously, you know, our family, we're the largest hospitality employer in Wakamiko County. For a year-round hospitality employers on the shore, we're one of the largest. We went and opened Bull Lips a number of years ago because the Red Roost is a failing business. To be quite frank with you, I hate to say that. Seafood prices and all you keep venue like that, and then all the challenges we have with increased insurance. I mean, our flood insurance itself annually is $30,000 or $32,000 a year. Our costs have gone through the roof there. So we came up with the plan to open a waterfront bar and thought that could drive revenue to save the business. It's been there since 1974. We bought it in 1996. It was a very good business for us for a number of years. The restaurant business is very challenging, but when you add in the seafood part of it now, especially crabs, it doesn't work. You all read of crab house closures on the eastern shore, some major ones lately, and that's because they're not financially viable. This makes that business viable. We had a sunset closure on the the holding tanks. We were allowed to use them. We had a sunset on it, which I was not aware of. It was done by an employee of ours during the the construction of there, but it was allowed. And last year, we're coming out of COVID, we had obviously a really rough run as an industry. Tom and I had a really rough run, and the local health department wouldn't let us reopen. So we had to escalate it to the short allegation and to a number of you all. And it actually ended up at Governor Hogan's on a Friday afternoon with Chris and Addy and the team going through. And on Monday, Governor Hogan got us opened. He's like, get these boys open, let's work this out. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to work it out yet. So we pursued, we're going on a parallel path right now. We're going after this legislation to let us open because, quite frankly, I'm a parent. I don't see the need to put another drain field along Wakamiko County. What we're doing is more environmentally sound. Unfortunately, and nothing against MDE or MDH, they protect the regulations and enforce them. They're not opened a lot of times to say, hey, let's go on and try something new. What we're doing there is much more environmentally sound. We have a water tank for hand washing. Everything up there is disposable. Many of you have been up there. Every, we're open Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Every Monday, we have a licensed septic hauler come, pump out the gray water tank, the two porta potties up there, because it's a satellite bar to the Red Roost, and go put it into a county facility and do it again the following Monday. And after that, that makes me feel a lot better because I don't want my kids to have to live with this down the down the road. I think we need to look more at more creative ways and more innovative ways in Maryland to do this. But right now, I'm concentrating on our business. So that's the way we've been operating. So what we've done is we've worked with our state people here and put together this bill. It probably needs to be tweaked. There, you know.
Recording stopped. Time down.
MDE sent a letter that we are privy to from the last couple of days with with the wording, you know.
Recording in progress.
Sister versus portable water, potable water tank. That stuff can be cleaned up. But the bottom line is, we want to have a tank for hand washing. We want to have a tank for the gray water. We want to have our two porta potties. It's a satellite bar to the Red Roost. If somebody don't want to go to a porta potty, they can go up to the Red Roost. We have a continual van, as most of y'all know, going back and forth up there. We feel like what we're doing is right. Is it in the current regulation? No. That's why we have a bill going in there. I I'm kind of baffled by these letters I'm seeing saying, oh, this isn't within regulation. Well, that's why we're putting a bill in. That's what you do.
Thank you, John, very much. Before council comments, because I know that a lot of the other delegates are have been waiting such a long time. I didn't know if Delegate Anderton or Delegate Hartman wanted to opine. Duke, can they hear us?
Yeah. So I don't know. You know, I'm up here in Annapolis as well. You know, signal's kind of, kind of wonky. But yeah, we've all been working on this for quite a while now. And, you know, I want to give John Nor credit for his patience. I've seen when he's not patient, and he's been very patient dealing with this. And the fact that we were able to get it open last summer was tremendous. And, you know, there were two bill tracks. We had put in, drafted a bill pertaining just to Wakamiko County. We're going to do this delegation bill, but, you know, Delegate Adams took the lead. It's in his district. It's in Senator Eckert's district. So I backed off. They wanted to go the state route, all the while knowing that we would have to end up probably tailoring this back to a Wakamiko bill. And it's coming into our committee next week, and we'll take it after the hearing and and craft it into a bill just for this one particular place. And and I'm very hopeful that that we'll be able to get this done, and we won't have to worry about it anymore, and that we can go to the next problem on our list. But again, you know, it's amazing, you know, I see Wayne on here, you know, Johnny was on here, you know, Mary Beth, Cherie, Addy, Chris. I mean, we're all working together on all these different things. And, you know, it's, it's just great seeing this team come together, you know, when when there's an issue and everybody, you know, works their part to make sure that we all come together and get it done. So, you know, it's just going to be another brick in the wall of all the successes we've had together, and I'm just hopeful to get it done. That's about as well as I can opine. So Wayne, your turn.
Thank you, Delegate. Thank you, Delegate.
Thank you, Delegate Anderton. I think it's been well said already. As we heard, it's in Delegate Adams' district, Senator Eckert. I think they're doing a great job. I certainly support the the concept. I, you know, the the operator has a great passion. And I think it's, it's, it's a very safe and proven way to to continue keeping that business viable. I'm there supported 100%. And would hope that the the county council would do the same. So thank you.
Thank you, Delegate. So from what I'm understanding, I guess the letter of support that the council's looking to send, the only, the only change we might make to it is some suggestion that it be a local bill, and that that would not compromise, that would not compromise it with any of the delegates or senators, right?
That's what's our.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I think that's good because we were talking about this yesterday, and that was actually Josh's first question was, you know, why is it just a local bill?
Okay.
Yeah, nothing that would help it.
And Councilman Hastings, if you'd want to come down, because I know you, you take the environmental front and walk down there with us, I can meet you down there this week and show it's a very simple closed system.
I'm sure it's all good. I just want to make sure we can get it through. And I think the only thing that MDE, knowing that crowd enough, they're just going to want to hear you spell out non-toxic chemicals or something like that.
Absolutely.
Because that's the one thing that's going to be brought up.
Yeah. I mean, my concern, again, was that we're using the biodegradable, all that stuff. It's, it's all disposable. My one concern, still the use of our two outhouses, but them recognizing that's a satellite bar of the Red Roost where we have all that. And Addy's laughing because she knows I say that every time.
All right, every, are we okay?
Yeah, I just wanted, good job on this. I think this is an answer to a problem that maybe in the future, because I brought up gray water when the Health Department was here probably about a year ago. If, if we looked at gray water, how it's dispensed through our septic systems now, and we could separate that, like for some of the homes that we're having problems with in Wakamiko County, I think we could, I think we, I think we could have solved some other problems.
There are systems out there that do that. I have unfortunately, the past year, done way too much research on this. I know much more about septic systems and disposal there's there. There's fascinating systems all down the East Coast that are allowable. And I've brought those forward and saying, hey, can we try this, try that? I've been told I'm wasting my time. Stick to the book. But I think, again, you're hitting on something because we need more development in this county, and there are systems out there that allow it. But right now, again, I want to concentrate on myself.
And that's where we're concentrating. I just wanted to say that this, this isn't an issue that's, that's new. You know, this is something that could possibly help somebody else, whether it be a business or a homeowner in Wakamiko County. So hopefully, this will get some attention and maybe in the future. I'm good with it.
Thank you, Joe. We do have a consensus. It looks like, it looks like it is unanimous. So again, Delegate, I mean, Senator Addy Eckert, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Same with Carl and Wayne. We appreciate it. Delegate Adams, we're really glad to have you here in person. It's, it's very difficult to know with everybody's schedule to be everywhere at the same time. Appreciate that. And John, thank you all. Sorry to hold you all so long.
No, it's all right. Thank you very much. Thanks for your support.
Welcome. Thank you. And good luck with it.
Thank you all.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, y'all.
Entertaining motion, going to closed session.
To move.
Second. Hobbies in favor?
Aye.